Because of course it's at the top. So. Six fifty-nine. All right. It'll be seven o'clock. So actually, the clock winds up, it's just three o'clock instead of seven o'clock. Jackie?
Yes?
At some point, somebody has to correct the time so it's not three o'clock.
Oh, is it stopped?
Well, no, the clock is working. It's just. Yeah.
Get your ladder, Jackie.
Oh, you know me, I'll tell you.
Bob, so I'd like to call the zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call?
Aziz Anson.
Norma Drummond.
Rocco Limatone.
Art Mahoney.
Can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands in law, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So just by way of explanation, I tore my hamstring this weekend, so I can't sit for very long, because of course, it's all the way at the top here. So if I need to stand at one point, I'm not being rude, I'm just really, I just, it's, I will have reached my limit for how long I can sit. So, um, so we're going to try to be as efficient as possible tonight, which is in your best interest too, so, all right.
You have to stand, you should go like this.
Well, I may just have to stand.
It'll make it look better.
And that's why I'm sitting on a stool instead of on that, because it's just easier for me to shift as opposed to... Anyway, enough said. We do have two meetings coming up, one July twenty-fifth, one on August twenty-second. We do have one set of minutes to approve. Aziz and I both sent our suggested amendments to those minutes out to the board members. Are there any other additional amendments to the minutes?
No.
If not, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, so folks, how this evening starts is first, we have public hearings on our agenda, those are applications this board has already reviewed, we've already made sure that we're at least comfortable. At least, so that the board has taken the time to review the application to make sure we understand any of the issues that may be irrelevant to it. And now we need to hear from neighbors if there are anything that we don't, are not comfortable with or are not aware of. So, so first is public hearings, and then the second part of the agenda is reviews. And those are generally the first time that we've seen any of these applications. One thing I do like to tell folks is, please understand that you're all here because you want something, or you're asking for something that's not allowed by code. And so it's the judgment of this board to consider it and, you know, whether it makes sense, because obviously, the code does a general overview of everything, and sometimes there are special circumstances related to your lots that may make sense. So, um, with that said, item number one, is there any additional information?
No.
Okay, at some point, what point do we say they're going to have to just re-advertise and we just take them off our agenda?
Let's say next month.
Let's say next month? We'll give them one more month?
This has been going on since...
I know, it's been going on.
For almost...
Several months.
Seven months now.
Seven?
Six, seven months, yeah, it was way back in January or so, or earlier.
For the public's information, item number one is Panty Industry. This is, it's a, what do you mean?
I'm trying to find these other microphones.
There's one right here.
Oh, yeah. My apologies. This one just doesn't seem to be picking you up. I'm hearing you, but it's very echoey. That's little stereo, there you go.
Looks a little scary. All right, let's see if this works.
Like a press conference.
How he's going to pick up every sigh, though, that's going to be the bad part. All right, so Panty Industry is a fill condition where there's a lot that, on Woodmont Road, where the owner, well, the builder has already brought in more fill than is allowed. And there was an information we needed about the contents of that fill, and there was information about the quantity of the fill that we were looking for, and the building department and the town engineer are not satisfied at this point yet about the information. So.
That's correct.
All right, but there's no additional information at this point for this board to review. Is anybody here from Panty Industry? No, okay, so we're just going to adjourn it for one more month, and then at that point, they're going to have to re-notice the neighbors, because it's just been going on for too long.
Is anybody in, any neighbor here also?
Yes, for Panty Industry?
I'm just reading from my house.
No, he wasn't coming tonight.
No, no, I'm sorry, they do, they do know.
No, but, 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 are you here for that application? Are you here for the Panty Industry application? Okay.
Okay.
You're here for the last application. Okay, item number two, it's a public hearing for Joseph Miller, Appeal four zero six four seventeen Clark Place, Hopewell Junction, requesting a five-foot rear line and a thirty-two percent lot coverage variance for a proposed fourteen-foot by thirty-one-foot in-ground pool pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Miller, okay, come on up. So last month, we had the opportunity to go through your application with you. You live in Hopewell Glen, which is by its nature, smaller lots, because it's a cluster subdivision. The idea was, there's more open space, because there was a large number of lots there, and so there's more preserved open space in that whole development, but the actual individual lots are smaller, and you're closer to your neighbors than others would be. The issue that we have discovered is that the houses alone probably exceed what's allowed by code for lot coverage, and so that's, you're the first one that's running into this issue, but you're doing some additional work in your backyard, you're putting a pool in, an in-ground pool, the size of which fourteen by thirty-one is not excessive. And, so you don't need a variance for the pool, because setback requirements for the pool are different, but for the pavilion, because it's a structure, you have to meet the rear yard setback. Am I not doing this one? This is for the pool? Okay.
It's for the pool, yeah.
Sorry, I was, I'm, there's somebody else with a pavilion coming up, so, okay. So, um, have you changed the size of your pool? Or no, you kept this pool the same? This is, okay, this is, see, there's too many, there's...
And fourteen.
Okay, because we actually had the conversation about the fact that you were, that's a really narrow pool, and if you've got kids, they're going to be like right on top of each other, so, okay, so, so based on our discussion last month, because adding the additional five feet didn't really impact your variance?
No.
Right, okay.
So the first revision that we see is just that now we have the dimension of the pool as being fourteen feet by thirty-one feet, is that the only change?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then five feet closer to my...
House, correct, correct, because you'd asked for twenty feet, you know, from the edge of the property, so that variance still stands at five feet. Yeah, okay, I'm good.
Any other comments from board members?
No, I'm good on this.
So is there anyone here who speaks in order against the request from Joseph Miller, seventeen Clark Place, Hopewell, requesting a five-foot rear line and a thirty-two percent lot coverage variance for a proposed fourteen-foot by thirty-one-foot in-ground pool? Are there any neighbors, and do I have any neighbor letters on this one? No, right, okay. So seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second. This is Appeal number four zero six four, applicant Joseph Miller requesting for one, a five-foot rear line variance with the requirement of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, and two, a thirty-two percent lot coverage variance from the requirements of Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed fourteen-feet-by-thirty-one-feet in-ground pool variances. A resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the property is located in Hopewell Glen, and most of the lots in this development are smaller than other properties in R1 Zone due to the clustered nature of the subdivision, and whereas the applicant has already obtained approval from the Homeowners Association, HOA, and whereas the property in the neighborhood have similar-sized pools, and whereas this is a type-two actionary seeker, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and whereas the zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and whereas the zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the small lot size. The variances are not substantial, given that the property is located in Hopewell Glen. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Joseph Miller for, one, a five-foot rear line variance from the requirement of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations, and, two, a thirty-two percent lot coverage variances from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed fourteen-feet-by-thirty-one feet in-ground pool. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant and owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz, Rocco.
Aye.
Albert. Oh, he's not here, sorry. I'm like, wait, Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you are all set, now you just deal with the building department. Okay? Have a good evening.
Take care.
Okay. Item number three, Appeal four zero six five, Wendy and Howard Travis, three oh nine Hillside Lake Road, Wapinders Falls, requesting a nine hundred and thirty square foot size variance for a proposed thirty-foot by fifty-six-foot or sixteen hundred and eighty square foot detached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. The footprint of their existing house is eight hundred and sixty-nine square feet. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. So good evening. We had the opportunity to talk with you guys last month about your application. You live on Hillside Lake Road, not in Hillside Lake, but actually, a little bit further down, where you have a larger property that, like, four point something acres, yeah, that honestly, I walk right by there and I can't see your house, okay? I see your neighbor's house, and actually, for a long as time, I thought that house was off your driveway, until I realized there's another driveway right down the street there. But, so this is, I mean, unless it's going to be impactful to any of your surrounding neighbors in the back, it's definitely not going to be seen from Hillside Lake Road. So, any comments or questions from the board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Wendy and Howard Travis, three oh nine Hillside Lake Road, requesting a nine hundred and thirty square foot side variance for a proposed thirty-foot by fifty-six-foot detached garage? One thing I do want to get on the record, by the way, is just the fact that there is no, you do not have an existing garage with your house. So that's one of the reasons, you know, having a garage. It is oversized, there's no question about it, but it's not going to disturb people, and we talked through last time about the layout of what you're going to use in there. There's no second story to it, so it's, you know. Okay, so no questions from board members, no one from the public, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Aye. This is Appeal number four zero six five, the applicants are Wendy and Howard Travis. It's a request for nine hundred and thirty-foot square foot size variance from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the Town Code for a proposed thirty by fifty-six, one thousand six hundred and eighty square feet total detached garage located at three oh nine Hillside Lake Road, and a resolution is offered by a zoning board member, Rocco Limatone. Whereas the footprint of the existing house is eight hundred and sixty-nine square feet, and the house does not have a garage, and whereas pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the Town Code, detached garages must be permanent and not a fabric-covered structure, and may in no event exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet or sixty percent of the square footage of the footprint of the principal structure, whichever is greater in size, and one and a half stories or twenty-five feet high. And whereas the property is situated on approximately four point five acres, and whereas this is a type-two action under SECRA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on June twenty-first of twenty twenty-three, and whereas the zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on June twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three, and whereas the zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property will remain residential in nature, and the structure will not be visible from the road. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the lot. The variance is not substantial, given the size of the property. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Wendy and Howard Travis for nine hundred and thirty-foot square foot size variance from the requirements of section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the Town Code for a proposed thirty by fifty-six, total one thousand six hundred and eighty square feet detached garage. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant-owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just on the question before the vote, um, in the first where it says the existing house is eight hundred and sixty-nine square feet, the footprint, it's really eight hundred and ninety-six, so we just vote on the resolution as amended.
Second is amended.
Okay, so votes as follows, Aziz? Rocco?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you guys just, you'll deal with the building department at this point, okay? Have a good night. Item number four, Appeal four zero six six, Michael Di Battista, ten East Meadow Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a thirty-five-foot rear line variance for a proposed twenty-foot by twenty-foot or four hundred square foot pool pavilion pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. This is the one I was thinking of. Good evening, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor? Aye. All right, so we did have the opportunity to go through what you were proposing to do, you've put the pool in, you've essentially got a patio that's been, you know, you've been under construction for a little while at this point. You have pool, there's equipment for the pool that meets the setback requirement, and so what you're looking to do is put the pavilion, actually, right next to that pool equipment, but just the dimensions of the pavilion make it beyond what's allowed by the code, so...
Well, your setback parameters are fifty feet from the rear setback or the rear property line.
Right, because they're different for patio, they're different for a pool, and than they are for a structure, so that's the issue that you're falling under, so. Unanswered questions from board members, I mean, where a pavilion goes makes sense to be near a pool, so I don't think there's any concern there. I know I have a couple of letters, I will read those into the record, but I just want to ask if there are any questions from board members?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, so two letters, um...
I think there's like three, I think.
Three? I have two.
We have two maybe.
That's not addressed to us. All right, so the first date dated May twenty-seventh, Jackie, to Jackie Keenan, I understand that you are secretary for the local zoning board, we have never had any reason to contact you, we are private people who generally don't bother in our neighbors' activities, however, we are now in an awkward position with our rear neighbor who appears to be building a massive cement structure on our property line. Another neighbor just notified us that the neighbor building the structure has applied for the variance, we aren't sure how to stop this. We are speaking to attorneys this week, in the meantime, I wanted to pull the entire zoning board, put the entire zoning board on alert that none of Michael Di Battista's neighbors have been contacted by him regarding his construction, nor are we okay with what he's doing, on the contrary, we want it stopped. Our concerns are threefold, one, most significantly, we are concerned about drainage, Michael has covered almost every inch of his rear property with cement, when it rains heavily, the water will flood our property, we do not see any indication of drains in his cement, we worry this will impact our landscaping and our ability to utilize our property. Two, the trees between our properties are thinning and do not provide a visual block, we are already subjected to his construction work, we do not wish to see his bachelor pool party house. Three, the noise from his pool party, pool house and pool are likely to echo due to the size of the cement pad, the construction noise has been giving us regular headaches, we are wary about the ongoing noise of his summer recreating. Please note that we do not wish to pursue legal action, we are not litigious people, however, we do need to protect ourselves from what appears to be an egregious violation of the zoning code. And this is signed by Sean and Laura Canfield at six Sebastian Court. The second letter, we'll address that in a second, the second letter is dated June third. Dear Mrs. Drummond and the Town of East Chicago Zoning Board, I'm writing in response to the letter we received this past week regarding the public hearing, Appeal four zero six six, that has been scheduled for Mr. Michael Di Battista's variance for a proposed twenty-foot by twenty-foot pool pavilion. As Mr. Di Battista's next-door neighbor, I want to speak on behalf of this matter, but I am unable to do so at the hearing, as I will be visiting family out of state. I'd like to make it known that we have no issues with the scheduled proposed plan. Mr. Di Battista's projects have always been very appealing, and it should be noted that all houses in the area benefit from the value that they add to the neighborhood. We are also not concerned with construction noise, as we know this is temporary, and the noise occurrences have always been within a considerate timeframe. Recreational noise will also not be an issue, as we believe households, families should be able to enjoy their homes as they see fit. If you have any questions, would like to speak, please feel free to reach me at the numbers above, and this is signed Stephanie Ryan, and she's at eleven East Meadow Court. So, um, let's just take into, we don't want to leave it unaddressed, some of the issues that have been raised. So in looking at, it's not addressed to us, that's not, yeah, that's not ours. So in looking at the site plan for your property, I think it's pretty clear that your property is not covered, being covered in cement. All right, um, you do have, you know, you've got the different areas, which is why you're running into the issue about your building, your limits of disturbance, et cetera, or where you're allowed to build, but there's a lot of land here that is not being touched, so, um...
Approximately two acres.
Yeah, so I'm, now, you don't generally have to put drainage in concrete or in cement, so, but I'm sure whoever designed your plan is going to make sure that no runoff is leaving your property, right? You're dealing with any runoff on your property?
Professional that's installing the pool.
Okay, well, sometimes you do have to question the professionals who are installing versus whoever did the design of something.
Termin application process.
Yeah, so, and the building inspector, your, our zoning administrator did go out and take a look, so we actually do have pictures of the work that's being done out there, very nicely done. I honestly say, I've never seen a patio go in before the pool went in, so, because normally, you want to let the ground settle first?
To get a pool, they did it a little differently, and they ensured that it was going to be there for a while.
Okay, that's, that's, you're the one who's going to...
Impacted by the elements, but you have a high percentage of clay, high percentage of clay as the soil, so...
Right, so it's pretty compacted to begin with, yeah, okay. And so you've actually provided us with drawings of what this pavilion looks like, so it's not really impactful from a visual perspective either. So comments or questions from board members?
Has the jungle gym been removed?
Yes.
Okay. Do you plan to put some landscaping between you and...
In additional landscaping, already planted prior to this meeting.
That's good, I'm good.
So is there any neighbor who wishes to speak for or against this? Sure, come on, come on up. Mr. Di Battista, if you have a few, step aside, thank you.
I'm Sam Ryder, and I live at eight East Meadow Court, it's north of Mike's property.
Okay.
And I agree with everything that Stephanie Ryan said, and I love her.
Okay.
Nailed, nailed it pretty good.
So basically, you approved the...
You're in support of?
You're in support of the applicant?
I am in support of it, yes.
Good, okay, thank you, thank you for coming this evening. Anybody else? Sure, come on up.
No.
Oh, sorry, if you, if you speak, if we, yes, there's a board up at the podium there, if we could just sign in so we have your name for the record? Thank you.
Am I reading this right, we're about thirty feet from the property line, from the pavilion? So it's a trailer, I mean, far enough away.
Sure, come on, if you don't mind, just go ahead.
Sure, my name's Laura Canfield, I am one of the authors of the other letter, who's not in favor, and I live at five Sebastian, not six. I don't know if that was a...
My reading, it's okay.
Sorry.
It says five.
Okay, thank you. I don't know that the two neighbors on the sides have the same overlap with this property, so they are not adjacent to where the pool is going to be, there's a garage between Stephanie and the pool, and with all due respect, I think your property is not, your property is off to the side as well, we are directly behind this pool. And my request is simply that the pool house, the pavilion, as you will, not be right against the property line. I think, as I've sort of seen, it's right, there is very little buffer visually between our property and the pool pavilion.
There is almost a sixteen-foot separation between the edge of the pavilion, proposed pavilion, and his property line, so there's almost fifteen point, fifteen feet, eight inches approximately, and the jungle gym is going to be removed, and the applicant has already said that he's planning, or he's already started to install, or is planning to put more separation just to reduce the noise coming to any of the neighbors, so, I mean, he is trying to mitigate the impact to any of his neighbors.
What is the, what is the proposed separation?
It's not proposed, it's, it's basically fifteen point to his property line, it's almost sixteen feet, so, so, and again, I don't know how far your house is away, so, but he is almost sixteen feet away from his edge of his property, and I don't know how far, I mean...
That's the edge of the pavilion.
Yeah, I mean, that edge of the pavilion, so I don't know how far your house is, or your pool, or whatever your backyard is, that you spend time doing recreation, and how much, you know, noise is going to go from this pavilion and this pool over to your property, but there is substantial separation. As a matter of fact, from the edge of the pool, it's almost thirty-six feet, nine inches, so it's almost like thirty-seven feet difference from the edge of the pool, from the pavilion, it's fifteen point eight, and so again, there's noises in the swimming pool, that's almost thirty-seven feet away from his property line.
Okay, I, it doesn't quite appear that in the back, but...
Well, again, I'm looking at the actual drawing of the...
So your, your house is where the jungle gym is, on that side?
We don't have a jungle gym.
No. Mr. Di Battista used to have a jungle gym on this property.
My house is behind the full stretch of his house, there's a little bit of waterway, there's like a stream that runs between our properties, I own beyond the stream. Do you see the stream on your plans?
No.
Oh, okay. There, so he used to have a jungle gym, I haven't seen it for a while. His jungle gym and his entire rear line of his property is the border between, is, is across from your property.
That's what I just wanted to get a... Is across from your property, or is on the side of your property?
So if you step, if you were to go from his house straight back, that entire line is against my property.
If I went straight back, and I encounter, I would encounter the jungle gym, I would have encountered the jungle gym if I'd been...
Jungle gym was off to the left corner, like his property.
Can I show you a picture, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just going to show them, they'll just come out of parcel and access, it's a clear image of your property line. Sorry, I don't have my eye pit with this picture on it. This is my property right here.
Right.
This is her house, approximately three hundred feet away from my...
Okay, so...
And this is the tree line with that little stream that she's indicating on the property line that separates the two parcels.
Okay, so most of the tree line is on her own property?
Correct.
Hold on, one speaker, one speaker at a time, hold on. All right, Art and Rocco, if they could see that. All right, Art and Rocco, if they could see that, that would be helpful.
This is my property here.
So, where was the jungle gym?
Jungle gym is in this corner, it's actually right there in the, in the image.
Gotcha, okay.
This is the tree line, and this is her house.
Okay, thank you. You see that all?
Okay, now, go ahead.
Yeah, so it's just, we are, more than the neighbors on the sides, we're more impacted because the, the line, the property line where this is going to be, the variance is across our property line.
No, it's not, not across...
Sorry, a neighbor can't request a variance on somebody else's property.
So, it, but it is, he is closer to our property, I believe, right, than...
No, he is actually on his property, he is on his property, if he had moved it another 10 feet, he wouldn't be requesting a variance, because his house is in the way, he cannot bring it closer to his house. That's why he's requesting a variance, because he has almost, let's say, 2 acres of property, but the way his house is positioned, that is the best location to place his pavilion and his thing, but if he can, if he had moved it another, you know, 5, 7 feet, he would be further away from your property. But again, you mentioned that you have a stream that's also kind of going, so your backyard has, you know, like, first backyard, which is attached to your house, and then there's a stream, and then another backyard, which further separates your property from his, from his proposed pavilion and the pool. So, there's, you know, it's further away, and, you know, again, he is, everything that he's asking for a variance is on his property. It is not impacting your property anyway.
What's the topography out there? Is it flat, or is he, or does it drain downhill and it...
Into the stream.
Drains into the stream, but from the, hold on, one speaker at a time, but from the stream, is your property uphill, or you're on, you're flat level with the stream?
The property is flat, but the stream is, is a...
It's swell, it's going to go down, and, because it's going to drain that way, so there is, as much as it goes down on his side, goes into the, goes into the stream, it's going to go uphill on your side, so...
But actually, my property goes beyond the stream, right, and so, yeah.
But if you're beyond the stream, is your property downhill, or is it uphill again?
It is uphill on the side of the stream, and then it is flat to his, his area.
Okay.
And then again, I think you had mentioned in a letter about the cement, his cement portion is only in the pavilion portion, and of course, the...
That doesn't even need a variance.
Yeah, so that, you know, but again...
The patio does need a...
Correct, but the thing is that we're talking about the cement structure where the drainage issue might, might occur, might possibly occur. He is going to put some, I mean, he's aware of the, that in case it is an issue, that he's going to put drains, or is having a professional put it together for him, and then also is going to put shrubbery, or trees, or something to, to absorb any water runoff, and/or to provide a barrier to your property as a neighbor, good neighbor.
All right, is there anything else you want us to know?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's another neighbor in the back? Did you want to speak as well?
I live in Loveville, New York.
If you don't mind, wait till you get to the microphone.
I live in Loveville, East Meadow Court, my wife wrote that letter, just want to reiterate in person that we have no problem with it, everything she said is...
Okay, thank you. If you don't mind just signing while you're there. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak for or against the request from Michael Di Battista, 10 East Meadow Court, Hopewell? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You want to offer the resolution, Mark?
Appeal number 4066, applicant Michael Di Battista, request of a 35-foot rear line variance from the requirement of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations in Section 194-107D of the Town Code for proposed 20-by-20, 400-square-foot pool pavilion. Location of 10 East Meadow Court, Hopewell Junction. Tax not needed, tax not required.
Nope, just go right to the whereas.
Resolution offered by zoning board member Art Mahoney. Whereas the applicant is currently constructing a new pool, and whereas the applicant is requesting to construct a pool pavilion in close proximity to the pool, and whereas the pavilion will be difficult to see during summer months due to existing tree cover, and whereas this is a Type 2 action under CECL, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on June 21st, 2023, whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on June 27th, 2023, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property will remain residential in nature, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property, the variance could be deemed substantial. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Michael Di Battista for a 35-foot rear line variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations and Section 194-107D of the Town Code for proposed 20-by-20, 400-square-foot pool pavilion on the condition that the existing jungle gym and storage pod are removed. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and send copy to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Votes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you just deal with the building department. Okay, have a good evening.
Take care.
All right, item number five, appeal 4067, Denise Hayes and James Hakowski. I hope I said that right this time. 32 Moonlight Drive, Stormville, requesting an 8-foot sideline variance for an existing 8-foot-by-10-foot or 80-square-foot shed, and a 19-foot sideline variance for a proposed 24-foot-by-37.5 feet or 900-square-foot detached garage pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. The footprint of the existing house is 1,508 square feet. Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, second.
All in favor? Aye. So, we had the opportunity to review your application, your appeal last month, the shed has been there for a long time, I don't even think you picked it up.
I'm interested in the house.
Yeah, so it was, it was there when you bought the property, and so what you're proposing now is a detached garage, your existing house had...
Had, there, very...
Okay, oh, this is one where the height of it doesn't fit your truck or something? Okay, I knew there was one there, okay. So, you do have an existing garage, but because of the height of it, you have low ceilings, I think was what the issue was.
Yes.
And so, you're looking to just build on 900, 24, 24 feet by 37.5, it's kind of, the reason it's extending a little bit further back is you're kind of going around the corner of the house there?
Right.
And you've got a deck or something that jutted out, but then you...
Actually, we had talked about it, so it should be changed to now it's square.
Oh, okay.
I don't have the...
So, it's going to be the same size?
Well, we had talked about last week, last month, was why not make it that way, and...
And actually, I was able to shorten the back wall by six, by...
So, what's on the agenda is the right, okay, what's on here is the revised amount. So, after last month's discussion, you guys went back and talked it through, and this is what you've come back with?
Yeah.
Okay. The finish will be the same as your existing house?
Yes.
Your, this is at the edge of your, top of the driveway there, so it doesn't make sense to put it anywhere else. I'm not thinking of anything else that was significant that came out with this one, so...
There's septic fields in the back, so I can go back to go over, back further to septic fields, and it's just, no other...
I think the issue was you had more prum on the other side of the property, but you didn't, but it didn't make sense, because the driveway wasn't there, so. All right, comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Denise Hayes and James Hakowski, 32 Moonlight Drive, Stormville, requesting an 8-foot sideline variance for an existing 8-foot-by-10-foot shed, and a 19-foot sideline variance for a proposed 24-foot-by-37.5-foot detached garage? I do have two neighbor letters, hold on, let's do these. Okay, so the first one dated June 14th, 16 Moonlight Drive, members of the zoning board, please accept this letter as a show of support for appeal 4067, Denise Hayes and James Hakowski, our neighbors at 32 Moonlight Drive, our neighbors who care about the appearance of and quality of life in our neighborhood. As their neighbors, we are confident that any additional structures built at their residence will maintain the character and quality of life on Moonlight Drive. Thank you for your service to our community. Signed, Joe Mahoney and Maria Mahoney. And then the second letter dated May 17th, from Susan Isaac, 40 Moonlight Drive, to whom it may concern, my neighbor located at 32 Moonlight Drive, Stormville, is requesting a variance to build a garage at the end of his driveway located at the above-mentioned address. Please be advised, I have no opposition to this, as I have been assured that it will not encroach upon my property and will not create any undue hardship. So...
Directly, that's the sideline variance that we're looking for.
She's on that side? That's the neighbor most impacted? All right, good, cool. So, any other neighbors who wish to speak? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
This is appeal number 4067, applicant is Denise Hayes and James Hakowski, requesting a 1, 8-foot sideline variance from requirements of Section 194-107 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 8 feet by 10 feet, 80 square foot shed, and number 2, a 19-foot sideline variance from the requirements of Section 194-107 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed 24 feet by 37.5 feet, which is 900 square feet detached garage, the variances. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas existing garage has very low ceiling and cannot fit large passenger vehicles, and whereas there is a tree line which shields lock behind the property, and whereas this is a Type 2 action under CECL, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Dutchess News on June 21st, 2023, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on June 27th, 2023, and whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the granting of variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as the property will remain residential in nature, and the new structure should not be visible to other property owners or from the street. The desired result cannot be achieved by any other means due to the layout of the property. The variances could be deemed substantial. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves the request of Denise Hayes and James Hakowski for 1, 8-foot sideline variance from the requirement of Section 194-107 of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for an existing 8 feet by 10 feet, 80 square foot shed, and number 2, a 19-foot sideline variance from the requirement of Section 194-107 and the Schedule of Bulk Regulations for a proposed 24 feet by 37.5, 900 square foot detached garage. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or the duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And Art?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries, you're all set, you just deal with the building department now.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, have a good evening. All right, folks, so those are all the public hearings, so everybody else here should be here for a review, which in most cases is the first time we're seeing these. So, item number six, appeal 4061, getaway house, 17 Monte Cristo Terrace, Hopewell Junction, requesting an appeal of a zoning interpretation dated February 2nd, 2023 by the zoning administrator determining proposed use by applicant would be defined as a trailer camp, as set forth in the Town of Eastfield zoning code, Section 131-3, and not a large-scale planned recreational development for Section 194-3 and 194-59 of the zoning ordinance. Is there anybody here for this application? Okay, another one, what do we...
I think we'll turn to the end of the table, if you have any highlights.
Yeah, because we've already, this is the third month, I think.
We need to know whether or not they...
They didn't pull that, aye. So, I mean, at some point, we just consider the application abandoned.
Or, or make the decision.
Well, I'd have to hold the public hearing and everything else to do, make a decision.
Correct.
We had, we opened the public hearing.
No, we're still in the appeal.
No?
We're still in a review.
Okay.
We never, we even, we never went to public hearing on this one. Anyway, all right, no, no show. Item number seven, appeal 4068, BDC Holdings, 1088, 1090, 1094, and 1096, Route 82, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance from the floor area ratio requirement of 0.35% to 0.45% pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Kevin Solely, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New York.
I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Kevin.
Kevin, thank you.
So, I'd like to talk about, or review a proposed variance request for a project on Route 82. So, my client needs to move, has four parcels in the contract, I'll just show them here over in front of me, so it's 1088, 1090, 1094, and 1096. It's assembled with four parcels that are undeveloped, just to orient everyone, so this is Valley Church, ACE Vet Hospital, and these four parcels are currently undeveloped. Our client is looking to develop a self-storage facility on the property. It is permitted under the zoning regs from a youth standpoint, however, from a building design standpoint, we are, we are looking to construct a two-story building. So, we're looking to construct a two-story building with a 41,000-square-foot footprint, so the total square footage would be approximately 82,000 square feet. Given the site constraint and size and the proposed use, we're able to comply with most, if not, most bulk requirements with the exception of the floor area ratio. So, the building coverage allowed in the zone is 35%, and a max lot coverage of 75%. Our proposal is only a building coverage of 22% and lot coverage of only 41. So, given this specific use, we're actually able to propose a far less intense use than some of the other uses permitted in the zone, however, but from a building footprint standpoint and from an operation standpoint, we're looking to request a relief on the floor area ratio, because we want to build a full two-story footprint of, for a total square footage of 82,000 square feet. So, that would result in a floor area ratio of 0.45, where 0.35 is permitted. However, you know, we've looked at this from an intensity standpoint, we don't believe this would result in any adverse impact or, or impact the, the community in this part of town in any way. It was obviously identified as a, you know, key commercial growth market in town, and since we're able to, since the use itself is far less intensive as some other uses that are permitted in the zone, and we're able to minimize the overall lot coverage and maintain the rest of those requirements, we're requesting relief for the floor area ratio.
Okay, so, I'm very familiar with the property, my physical therapy, most physical therapy is right on the corner there, two lots away. There is a residential house, very much in use in between, okay? So, there is a residential use in that area. There is a house on the property, tell me about the property that you're not purchasing, because there's a house on there, although it appears to be abandoned, I don't see any active, you can see the house through the trees from 82, but that property is not...
So, it's not, it's not part...
It's not part of your proposal here?
Right, correct.
Because it's just not for sale, or it's not...
It wasn't necessary to, you know, I believe it's a different owner than the, the rest of the parcels, so it's a different, you know, and I think actually the, I'm not sure if that owner is actually readily available or accessible from a contact standpoint.
Because the issue is that this property is, provides an easement to that, that's the driveway for that house, and that's a landlocked parcel, and I understand you're proposing a new driveway easement that's kind of, really is getting to the wrong, to the wrong side of the property than where the existing access would be, not that it's, I agree, it's not easy to see how that person currently gets in there now, because it's so overgrown.
Right, so, so there is, there was an access easement benefiting this parcel to the rear through this side? the rear through this site. Our attorneys and land use councils have reviewed that, we believe we have the right to relocate that easement, so as part of our plan, we would be relocating that access for that parcel, so that parcel would continue to have direct access to eighty-two and actually, you know, we're able to even provide that in a location to the north so that it can be completely separate and independent from the, from the proposed commercial use, which, which is part of the property. And we can, you know, provide access to, to a reasonable location where they'd want to potentially use it in the future if and when that property owner ever decides to do something with that house.
So all you're proposing is an easement, you're not actually building them a driveway?
We can certainly look at that as part of like a special permit application, you know, and we can certainly give it from an improvement standpoint, whatever would be, you know, whatever the, would be deemed appropriate, you know.
Okay.
Our application here tonight is really just to get some feedback on the, the relief needed to allow the project to move forward.
So let's get to the technical side. This is an application before the planning board?
No, we had.
I think it's a sketch plan application.
Correct, we, we filed a sketch plan application and presented it to the planning board in January, and we wanted to understand how the planning board felt about our proposed use, the requested relief from a, from a floor area ratio standpoint, and we had a very good, I think we had a very good sketch plan discussion and, and meeting. They encouraged us to come to, to this board to seek relief for the floor area ratio, which brings us here this evening.
So Michael, the point I'm getting at is whether this needs to be a coordinated review.
Under seeker, I think.
Under seeker, yeah. Why would we be, really, we shouldn't even be lead agency, it should be the.
Planning board.
Planning board that's lead agency, because at the end of the day, they're going to make the determination of what it looks like, how tall it's going to be, and stuff like that, that's.
Of, of course, but.
So I understand, they sent you here for, they sent you here, so you're now, you're now in a dilemma.
They, they directed us to actually file the ZBI application because in order, we need to secure this so we can then file to, to the planning board and go through the seeker.
You can, you can run the two processes, correct?
Yeah, they should be run concurrently.
Same time, because as the chairman said, it's secret, we have the proposal, the review has to be done all at once.
So I think the concern was, you know, the, the costs and efforts of the full site design and, and secret process obviously is far more intensive than trying to see if we would be able to get relief for the floor area ratio, because if we can't get relief for the floor area ratio, there may not be a project to move forward with here. So we were, that's, I think that's why we initially discussed going through in this path, because we want to obviously understand how the, how the ZBI feels.
Well, I mean, I mean, you're near as both of us, you can at least get feedback from the board. I think what the chairman was saying, I agree with her, as far as secret, you may not be able to get a full determination until, let's say, the planning board is leading, so you give you a negative, negative declaration.
Correct. That, that, yeah, that would be our expectation from a secret standpoint.
So tell me about your building itself. It's a larger rectangular structure that if it's not, and it's not up here for you what it looks like, but if it is not designed well, could be, could stick out like a sore thumb. You've got the small real estate office across the street, Berkshire Hathaway, you've got, like I said, a residential house right next door, a little blue house, you've got the church, which is setback, you've got a detailing place, which has a building and a house in the front, and then a garage, you've got ACE Veterinary, you've got a bunch of other businesses that are not very close to the road, so tell me about what you've, I mean, the church is probably the closest, because I see you've got a row of parking in the front there. Sorry, guys, I'm just getting really uncomfortable here.
No, it's, it's okay, hopefully, hopefully it's not our application that's making you uncomfortable. So we're actually, we're actually able to push the building pretty far back, you know, the building setback line is actually all the way up here, we're probably an extra.
How far back are you? I don't have a.
Our front yard.
I've got the site plan.
Let's see, we're at seventy-five feet from a front yard standpoint.
Okay.
From a building placement standpoint, so that's actually behind the vet, that's further.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're probably in line with where the vet is.
Well, I think we're actually further behind.
Okay.
Further away from the road than where the vet sits.
Okay.
You know, the building itself, this is a, this is a climate-controlled facility. Based on site topography, we actually designed it so we could actually get access from each level. The lowest, the lowest elevation would be access from the front, and then you'd be able to drive around the building to like an upper elevation, which would access the second floor of the facility.
Okay.
Fully climate-controlled, you know, this is, this is a product that's called Stack and Store, and it's actually, they're, they're rolling out throughout Westchester and into Connecticut and upstate New York, and it's a, it's a very exciting use.
Is it, do you have specific colors that you use? I mean, again, not the purview of this board, but it factors into whether we, you know.
Of, of course, yes, there, there, the, the color scheme is generally red and white and black, however, they have done some additional architectural enhancements.
Oh, I thought you saw something in orange.
Well, there was, there is some, they kind of brought up a couple, I think, I want to actually, I think my plotter color may be off a little bit, but we do have some, some pictures of, of what they were contemplating for something like this. But again, I think from an architectural standpoint, the applicant's certainly willing to work with the board to come up with something that, you know, they want to create a really good addition to the community, and they're happy to, you know, gauge any kind of comments or feedback on the architectural style. But again, we, the, obviously, we need to figure out if we're doing this jointly or not, but our, our big expectation was trying to receive feedback, kind of our floor area ratio relief is something that the board could consider.
You need this variance because, just please bear with me, because you need the quantity of units to make the development financially feasible, is that?
Correct.
Why can't we just shrink the building and meet the, meet the requirements?
So.
Because financially, you need this.
Correct, yes, and again, from a.
That would be my guess, so.
Yes, and from a, and from a site constraint standpoint, you know, from an intensity standpoint, there are all, obviously, a lot of different components that go into zone regulations, which are geared towards making sure that the site doesn't become overdeveloped.
Right.
Or far too intense. So, you know, we're allowed to cover or pave seventy-five percent of the lot, we're only proposing to cover forty-one percent of the lot. We're allowed to have thirty-five percent of the building covered with a building footprint. We're only proposing twenty-two percent of the lot to be covered with a building footprint. We're simply requesting additional square footage from a floor area ratio standpoint, so we can have a full forty-two thousand square foot footprint over two stories.
And so basically, you're going to end up with five hundred units overall for the, for the consumers?
I believe that's the.
Because you're going to be on level one and level two, and it adds up to.
Right, a total of five hundred units.
You said forty-two thousand square feet?
Yes.
Your proposal says eighty-two thousand five thirty-eight.
It's each level.
So that's, that's the total gross, right?
His footprint is a.
Or forty-one. Gotcha.
And you're already proposing land banking parking, so you're not.
Correct, yeah.
Because your use, your, your use isn't intensive on parking.
It's a, it's a very low-intensity use.
Right, and it's not rush hour park, it's not rush hour traffic or anything like that.
And that's, and that's why we feel that, that it's a very appropriate use for the location and the site, given its constraints, so we think the relief we're requesting is modest and it won't cause any adverse impact or.
So the forty-five percent includes land bank parking, or it does not include that?
Well, forty-one percent, I don't believe that includes the land, the, the land bank parking.
So if you ever had to build the, the parking.
We, we would still be far less than the seventy-five percent coverage.
Wait, we're jumping from thirty-five percent to seventy-five percent?
So there's, so, so more area ratio.
Floor area ratio, the building, sorry, guys, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, there's a lot.
My mind is on my hip right now.
There are obviously a lot of different aspects.
Okay, all right, that's.
Now, all these four are currently owned by the same owner?
Yes.
All of them?
Yes.
And are you going to consolidate them as one parcel, or are you going to just keep it as four parcels for the future?
They would be consolidated into one single lot.
So.
Four parcels would be consolidated.
Single lot, and then my rough calculation shows me that it's going to be about four point two seven acres of property, four point two, two seven four acres.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Something like that, approximately, so it'll be just one, like four acre lot that you're putting on this unit, and again, you're not using all the space available to you, so, yeah, I mean, plus, we're trying to make it two floors so that you are increasing the, the units from, you know, you're putting the units on two different floors.
Correct.
So you're not using too much of the footprint of the building or the, for drainage and other issues.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, looks good to me.
When you came before the planning board, was it originally three stories?
Well, we initially came to the planning board and actually required about possibly pursuing three stories, they were.
With the same footprint?
Well, it actually would have been a smaller footprint, but I think there was, there was some concern about looking at that type of height and.
In that area, yeah.
You know, and I, and I will say that as, you know, when you drive up that road and when you see Valley Church, Valley Church is probably, is probably the same height that we would have been at three stories, and it's far closer to the road, but obviously, it's a little bit narrower, so what we did was we came back and we kind of came, went back to the drawing board a little bit, and we said, all right, if we can achieve this on two floors and still meet the square footage that we need, and all we were seeking was relief for the floor area ratio, we thought that was probably our best approach.
Okay.
So the only thing this board has to think about, and it obviously beyond what the, the only, what the planning board might think, is if you're, this business fails, the next user and what the likelihood is of there, because anything we approve stays with the site.
So, so the floor area ratio would run with the land, however.
Right.
Any change in use would require planning board approval, which would trigger the need for new reviews and new requirements, so they'd have to demonstrate that.
Within reason, right.
That they have adequate parking, they'd have to do a traffic study to ensure that it wouldn't have adverse impact to traffic operations, so I think that those protection measures are in place because we are proposing such a specific use, that if there were to be a change in use in the future, there'd be enough controls with the planning board to ensure that it wouldn't have an adverse impact.
All right, so from a technical perspective, what do we have to do?
So there, there are a couple of threshold issues. I think before really this board taking the schedule of public hearing, you have to decide whether or not you want to go forward with the full site plan application, which we all understand is a lot more expensive, you know, just for your client, which I know was generally made to hold up. So I think the threshold issue, obviously, there's a couple, is how quickly do you want to go with the site plan, this floor area ratio, you know, variance request, then also the easement that currently exists, so I'm happy to speak with the, you know, your client's land use council, so if you can just provide that information to Jackie, and Jackie can provide it to me, I'm, I'm happy to have a conversation.
Yeah.
So to me, those seem to be the three issues, so once, I think you heard some of the board's preliminary questions and feedback, obviously, they, they would come to a conclusion.
Right.
So I think, you know, maybe once we discuss the easement a little bit further and other things, then your client will have enough information at least to decide whether they want to go a full throttle ahead.
Okay, from a, from a statutory standpoint, a timing standpoint, our current application before this board, obviously, we'd like to keep that rather than have to resubmit. Is there any timing issues? We'd love to set up that call as soon as later this week to, to talk through any easement related issues, and then we can certainly, you know, work expeditiously regarding the site plan application, but I prefer, what we hope, to, to keep this application from a variance standpoint, current, I guess.
I, I don't see any timeliness issue, I, I think you can keep this before the board as well, and hopefully, that, within the next month, we'll have a bunch of these questions answered, and then, you know, if you're going to go forward with the site plan application, you continue with this board.
Okay.
I mean, you can come back with any additions next month or the following month, or ask for an adjournment in case you don't have all the.
We're not in public hearings, so there's no reason for an adjournment, and it doesn't make, we, I don't even know that we're the ones.
I think, I think we're something that's.
That to be doing in public here.
The one that makes the most sense.
Right.
Because they're going to have to look at traffic.
Planning board should be lead agency.
Greenage, other things, so.
Yeah, we, we would assume they'd be the lead agency, we just, I, I don't think, perhaps there was a break in communication, I didn't think we had to do them jointly, I thought we could process this one first, but we certainly understand, you know, the, the.
Something at this level, I, I would imagine it would be a board, it would be, I think, that makes, makes the most sense.
Right.
Okay. Any of the other commissioners have any comments or thoughts or questions, just so we can try to get the best feedback for our clients?
I don't at this time, because I agree with the chairman as to the process that we think should be followed.
So, sorry, we can't take any further, but this is, I mean, I mean, on the whole, I think there's, I, my knowledge of the existing storage facilities is they have waiting lists, so I don't doubt that from a business perspective, this business will be successful. Of all places, this corner is, doesn't have a whole lot of activity, although, you know, there's not great shoulders on that area of eighty-two, and the nature of the properties that are there, particularly across the street, are slower in height and more residential, but I don't think it's horrible, you know, just, it's what it's going to look like, it's going to be more, and that's not our purview, so we're just very clear on that, it's just how it fits in with the, with the other things on this, that's a little hodgepodge of an area.
Understood. Well, we want to try to pull some of that together.
Yeah, that would be nice.
I think we can be a great addition to.
Because even where Mike and Joe's is, across the street, that, that's a strange plaza there, lighting in each of these places is different one to the next, so it's.
Each storefront has its own personality, kind of, so I think.
Right.
Try to bring that together a little bit.
All right.
Okay.
All right, so check with Jackie, because he may not even need to come next month. We may need the planning board to actually circulate for lead agency first.
Yep.
And then, come, we'll come back and see how quickly, because we meet the week after planning board, right? They're the third Tuesday?
Yeah.
So if they meet next July and, and the, the third Tuesday, we'll meet the fourth Tuesday, then we may have direction at that point to be able to at least not contest their lead agency status and get things going on that way.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening. Item number eight, Appeal four zero six nine Jessica DeRosa, eight sixty-seven Route three seventy-six Hopewell Junction, regarding a one hundred and twenty-six front line, ninety-three foot left side, sixty-one foot right side, and nine foot rear line variance for an existing doggy daycare pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, so we've seen you before.
You have.
And we actually liked the site that you had before.
Too bad the owner wasn't possessed.
Yeah, well, apparently the site didn't work necessarily for all parties concerned, so tell us what you're here for. Somehow you opened up a doggy daycare without.
Yeah, so I fumbled a little bit there, the last time I did this, I had the guidance of like a real estate agent and everything, and then this time, I was like, oh, I can figure this out, like I'm just renting, I didn't realize when you rent, it's the same process, so I got myself here. So we've been there for good, over six months now, we've been there, we've been operating and running, we've made friends with a lot of our neighbors and stuff, so I know the initial concern came from our fence. So ideally, how the building is set up is, the building we rent is four suites. The first two suites are occupied by the law office, they're open, they're active, they're running every day, our walls are soundproofed inside already, so we haven't caused them a disturbance at all, we have ample amount of parking, so that hasn't caused anyone a disruption, and then we put the fence up outside, again, we haven't seemed to have any issues with anyone, we've made friends with the people next door that have the children's center, sometimes the parents actually bring the kids over. Our neighbor right behind us has like an outdoor kennel of their own for their personal dogs, so they have plenty of their own dogs, so we've made friends with them. So really, we just want to get on the right page with the town, because I want to be in good standings with everyone, we like to participate in community day, we like to get back, we've been part of East Vishko for a couple of years now, so I just want to make sure I keep myself in a good standing, and eventually, the idea with the spot was, I do like the location that I'm in, but I, I know how well my business is doing, and I'm getting married this weekend, and then.
Oh my God, wow.
Yeah, I'm getting married that night, it's so slow, yeah, so I'm doing that, and then when we get back from our honeymoon and everything, my fiance and I's plan, he just sold his pizzeria, he owned a pizzeria in Rogers, he just sold that, now he's working with me, so we were going to start looking for an actual piece of either like farmland or ample amount of acres to eventually take this business and move it somewhere where we're really not close by to anybody, we can do it on a larger scale and be in a really good position.
Okay. So let me start by saying, you have the fortune or misfortune of the fact that I walk by this property every single day. The good news is, I didn't know you were there.
Okay.
Okay? I don't hear your dogs.
Thank you.
All right. I have noticed a lot more cars in there, and I kept wondering, why are all these cars in that particular, the law office must be doing well. Now I know it's not the law office, but, so yeah, your business is not, in my mind, at all destructive. I have honestly never heard a dog barking there.
Thank you.
I will tell you, that fence is really ugly.
Yeah, it is.
Really ugly.
So for the fence...
So it like, looks like, is it, my impression of it, walking by, is it, it looks like it's a chain link fence covered with a black fabric.
Yeah, so I did the chain link fence, and then I did the mesh over it, so people weren't seeing the dogs.
Right.
I have...
Well, and it probably keeps the dogs calmer, too.
Right, right. And I have no problem either, you know, bringing the fence coming back in and switching that to a different type of fencing that's more aesthetically pleasing.
Putting, if the landlord could put some bushes in front of it and just block it a little bit.
There's already those two trees, so I can line it right there, even if on the other side, that's next to the children's center, there's a lot of trees there, but even if they wanted me to match and make more aesthetically pleasing bushes, I have no problem bringing in landscaping.
I mean, there's extensive lawn area in front, so unless you know it's back there, you really, your attention is not really brought back, especially because it's so dark. The fact that I knew it was there, I went, was like, ah, that's what that is, and that's ugly. So again, I don't think it needs a lot of landscaping, I think just things, it needs just something to just break up that mass of black, ugly mesh, that's all. All right? But from a functional perspective, like I said, I didn't even know you were back there. All right? So Tom, answer questions from board members.
No.
Norma.
I'm good.
I'll just state that we have to also determine the measurements from that fenced-in area to the property boundaries.
Okay.
We have the boundaries from the building, but not the fenced-in area. So that we need in order for her to advertise properly.
Got it, okay. Sorry, I should read the zoning administrator's comments before. All right, anything else, Matt, that you noticed, or?
No, that's it.
That should be pretty straightforward, getting it from the surveyor to get the damage.
Well, again, she didn't buy the property, she's renting it, so, and that law office has been there for years.
Yes, and I'm actually, so the other hard thing is, right now, I'm very close friends with the landlord who owns the property. She was actually going to come tonight, but she's fallen a little bit ill, so the conversation might evolve into eventually us taking that property. I don't think that's something I would really do, but, you know, that's why she's not here tonight. Yeah.
Okay.
And she merged the two lots, they were originally separate?
Oh, so that lot to the right is, was separate? I was wondering why it was, this is so far back.
So Patricia merged it so that we could move forward with all of this, too.
Okay.
Because we couldn't have the fence on the property without a dwelling or building, so they merged the properties.
And again, you have a survey, survey of...
What's the date of the survey?
April 15th?
Oh, it's recent.
I just had that done.
Okay, so then you can go back to the survey or pick some additional measurements.
I can come grab the couple of lines.
Yeah, that's fine, that's good.
Because the fence attaches to our door, so it would really just be the three sides.
Okay.
Correct.
And your hours of operation are?
We start at 7:00 a.m., and then we close at 7:00 p.m. Sundays, we are only 8:30 to 6:30.
Okay.
But generally, we are done before then. I run a very structured daycare, so it's not a place where people are allowed to just drop off dogs, they run around all day. We run it that every hour, there's a different activity, so the little dogs are in one room, the big dogs are in another, the medium dogs are in another room, and then the little guys might be doing an enrichment puzzle, group one's going outside for an hour, group two is doing toy time, then they switch, 12 to 1, lights go out, we treat them like kids. They literally do lunch and nap time, lunch and nap time, like they go, they're crazy, the young ones eat lunch, we turn on calming music, the lights change color.
That's cool.
I want to go.
Okay. Motion to advertise.
With the exception of the break, it's sounding like cinnamon chip.
Exactly.
Well, did they advertise? Yes, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Please, within the next week, 10 days.
Jackie will give you your, well, no, she's not going to do anything this weekend, because she's getting there. So first off, congratulations on your ceremony or your services this weekend. Jackie will leave you the information for your landlord about the sign.
Perfect.
Okay?
Great. Thank you guys very much.
We'll see you next month. All right, have a good night.
Congratulations.
Yes. Hope everything goes well. Oh, wow, okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thanks.
Item number nine, Appeal 4070, Brian and Cynthia Seaco?
Yep.
Okay, good. Sorry, 356 Augusta Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a two-foot sideline variance for a proposed fence to be placed on the property line pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. So again, first time we're seeing this, if you could just take us through, why are you here?
Thank you, Travis, and the project is to replace an existing fence that's on the property line. Over the winter, it's deteriorated.
Okay. Is it your fence, or was it your neighbor's fence?
It's my neighbor's fence, Mr. Hopewell.
Okay.
And him and I are good friends, so I went over and spoke to him. He's undermanned it to keep these dimples in his yard of a fire fence, and I have young children, so it's usually better for us to add a fence between the property. And so we wanted to propose to replace the fence as is. We spoke to A1 Fencing Company, who advised us to keep it where it was, to tie it into the existing fence, and there's also a large oak tree that where the setback would be. So it's simplified construction. It's easier for everyone.
It doesn't tell me how tall this fence is, but the fact that it's asking for the two feet tells me it's a six-foot fence?
That's right.
Okay. And your neighbor's in agreement?
Yeah.
So you're using the existing property line, you're just looking to replace what's there?
That's right.
Who gets the good side?
What's that?
Who gets the good side of the fence?
It's, there's no, sorry, on this fence, there's no good side, it's like, it sits on the poles, so that like they're both look the same.
Okay.
So finished.
Okay, that's because normally whoever owns it, the...
Is it a vinyl fence?
Vinyl. Normally whoever owns it, the office, the outside gets the good finished side, so as long as both sides are good, okay. Same color as what's there now?
What's that?
Same color as what's there now?
It's currently a wooden fence, we're going to replace it with white vinyl.
With white vinyl, okay.
Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Good, thank you. Item number 10, Appeal 4071, Joseph Malosky, 511 Holmes Road, Holmes, requesting a front yard variance for an existing generator and propane tank, and a 57-foot variance for a proposed 24-foot by 28-foot or 672-square-foot detached garage, less than 100 feet from Interstate 84 right-of-way pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Phew. Hi. So again, first time we're seeing this, take us through what you're proposing to do, and why? Why are we, why are you suggesting the garage needs to be where it is?
Where the property is, it's still a place to put wood. I saw, I had an architect come by, and he was suggesting to go there also. Keep the fence put itself.
The generator and the fuel tank are already there?
Yes. There's no bulbous.
Is it visible from the front, from anybody driving by? Is it visible, is the...
Well, not really. It, the property goes down, it's all weeds and everything, the whole area in front of it, and I'm looking at planted trees across the line, you know, in front of it anyway, because I don't want to see the weeds.
Okay, but again, nobody, nobody passing by would be able to see this?
No.
And wonder why, is there a generator in somebody's front yard?
You make it like that, 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 clips, that, you get it, if you're lucky.
Okay. All right. Is there no other place in the yard for it to go? I mean, those are pretty...
No. The pool's right there, next to the house. On the other side, it's, it's a trough.
Okay, wait, the fuel, the generator and fuel tank are for the house, not for the pool, right?
The pool's right there, right, next, you know, it's about, I would say, 10 feet, 12 feet, next to the house.
Got it, I see it.
And then it's all bulbous, that go, the whole line running between the pool and the generator. That's what the garden is, I, I did it with, you know, I planted plants where I could not put wood chips there, so you don't see them as much.
Okay. You guys have the pictures?
No, I don't have pictures.
And that's why I cleared out in front of it, so I put trees there, I want to put a small fence and trees in front of it, so you don't see them. You don't see it anywhere, but...
Just two, right?
You can't bring the proposed garage closer to your property?
That's it.
Excuse me? I mean, the garage is all the way...
Yeah, it's the only place I see, so there's a leach field right behind there.
Okay.
And the garage is like 20 feet past the leach field, whatever, you know, the things of survey.
And then take us here.
Okay, so basically, you have the house, the leach field, and then the garage?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so you have to, okay, you're kind of stuck.
Now, where's the, where's the proposed garage going?
Up here.
There's an updated date today. It's what date, June 16th.
Here.
All right.
Okay. So you're not proposing any additional access to that garage, right? You're just going to go from within your property to get back to the garage?
The driveway goes, goes straight back, there's a hill.
Okay.
It's probably about 3 feet.
No second curb cut or anything like that on any?
No.
Okay. Just making sure.
From what I see up here, is that the driveway to the garage...
These two, this side.
Terminates by the chain link fence, and then there's a carport that has access to the Holmes Road. Is that how it's supposed to be? I mean, how do you bring the...
There's two driveway links there.
But it, it doesn't show a continuous driveway, it just shows a carport, so I guess somehow it's not from the June 16th map or the survey that is, oh, the whole thing is a driveway. Oh, I see, okay. Okay, I see, okay.
The way it's worded is a little...
Yeah, the way it's worded, okay.
It's fine.
No, I see, so the whole corner is basically a driveway.
So you're, you are the issue...
I was in the little block, I'd probably use it for vehicles, unless there's a big store coming, I would put, you know, call them, I won't just keep, put the, you know, my trash stuff in.
Yeah, that's fine, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. No, I was just trying to figure out how you're going to get your stuff in all of the garage, but anyway, yeah, I'm good.
Question for Michael. The house itself is not, doesn't meet the 100-foot setback. Do we have to just deal with that?
We might as well, since it's here.
Let's just clean it up? I mean, we're not going to have you move your house, let's just, but then the pool, too, all of these structures are...
Right.
All right, so we're going to have to, he's got the measurements on here, so we don't need any additional measurements. I mean, normally, I wouldn't encourage somebody to put residential use closer to I-84, just because of the noise from I-84 and the, you know, but you're talking about a garage, so I don't...
It would block the noise from it.
It probably would, actually, you know, and it's 24 by 28, it's a two-bay garage, it's, you're not asking for anything, you know, oversized or anything like that. Does your existing house have a garage?
It used to, I mean, mother, daughter, yeah, I live with my mother, she passed away.
Okay.
I have it downstairs.
So you have no existing garage on your house?
I have my, yeah.
It's the way of life. So yeah, so the existing house has no garage, so it makes sense for a reasonable-sized, two-car garage. So we just need to get the measurement, well, the pool's going to be more, that's his backyard, so it's, that's more than 50 feet, it's 54 feet, so the pool's, no, it's all within the 100 feet, that's the problem.
The pool's 54.
Pool's 54.
Pool's 54.
So that needs a variance.
It will need a variance, right.
No, it only needs 25. Does that need to be 100 feet?
I, that's what I mean, that's why I'm asking Michael, is everything to meet the 100?
It's going to need a, yeah.
Obviously, the 100-foot requirement came into code, became zoning after your house was built.
Yeah.
All right, so that's why we've got this issue.
And we're going to clean it up.
Motion to advertise.
Okay, so we're going to...
Jackie will work with Michael and Matt to, please, cover everything.
Motion to advertise.
Jackie.
All in favor?
All right.
Bye. We will see you next month. Jackie will give you your information about a sign. Wait, hold on, I don't want a sign on I-84.
No, put it on here.
No, I have the one.
All right, that would be just silly, so he's just got Holmes Road, we agreed, there's one sign.
That's fine.
Okay. I mean, putting one on I-84 would just be... Okay, sorry, you didn't need to, I just saved you from having to buy a second sign, okay? That's all you need to know. All right. Item number 11, Appeal 4072, Paul Akins, we have a return customer. 47 North Mission Road, Woppeners, requesting a six-foot sideline variance for a proposed air conditioning compressor pursuant to the Schedule of Bulk Regulations of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. Do you need me to sign in?
You do not need to sign in, because you're the...
I'll begin.
Yeah. So your house isn't finished yet, because I walk by there all the time.
We're two years into our one-year...
You know, yeah, and I knew how much your wife was waiting for that to get finished. You do have a hard work, and that, and that, you're really, really narrow side is just, you know...
It's taken me a lot of money, because we're doing all the labor ourselves.
I can tell.
But that extends the timeline a little bit, because I can only do it on 19 weekends.
Yeah, and you have very patient neighbors to, you know, just please, keep it as clean as you can. That's my only comment, okay?
Yep.
But, so anyway, you're in here today because you now want to put an air conditioning, AC compressor in. Where is it going to go? That's all.
It's going to go, as you're looking at the house, it's going to go on the right side of the house.
Driveway side.
Driveway side, okay.
Behind the bulkhead for the basement.
Okay.
It's right about where the new addition is. It's right about where the new addition is. It'll be right sitting outside that footprint.
To the driveway.
We already replaced the furnace, so we, we had a separate permit, replaced the furnace with a new propane furnace, putting in central air as part of that, and just need to get the variance so that we can put the compressor down and connect it and get it working.
There are two open violations on the property, ma'am?
Property maintenance, just some stuff that's got to be cleaned up.
Tall grass and, and tall grass and debris? Some cleanup of debris?
There might still, there might still be some construction debris we've got to clean up.
Okay, let's...
Was that a lot of that potential to be sent to us?
There's just two open violations for property maintenance and a backhoe or something on the property.
Or using it.
Right, but, but you're still using it for part of the construction?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we haven't finished the, we've got, where we dug out the basement, we've still got to finish the landscaping in the back, the, the drainage and everything, so I'm going to use...
Yeah, so, so I mean, yeah, to Norma's point, it's just been going on a long time, so that's an open violation, as well as some of the construction debris and things that you demoed in the back. So if you're still working on that, it's going to take you time, and then the violations can be closed out, but, you know, it's all tied to his construction, Norma.
Okay. All right, but again, just goes to...
We used a tall grass, I'm just saying with tall grass.
It could, yeah, it's property maintenance, and it could go back? I'm trying to find that one complaint.
Because I didn't see that in any violation, but what have we got? Because he's been coming, wanting to take care of whatever, you know, it's...
In this photo, the weeds are as tall, almost as tall as the tractor.
So you're talking on the side of the road?
Well, this is behind, behind the house.
But this is, this is between the tractor and the road, those, that weeds?
Well, they look like they're right by the tractor.
Right, but the tractor, it's the tractor, and then we have like eighty-five feet, and then it's the road, so that rats that you're seeing, these weeds, between the tractor, trees, and the road, which we don't ever...
Construction's been taking so long. So you don't think it's your property?
No, I'm saying, we've never, we've never re-racked any of that, ever. It's all whatever shrubbery and everything that has grown back, have been, become secure, whatever shrubbery has grown.
That's, that's what they called out from...
Yeah, I mean, right, that's all, that's, that's been there for forever, because it's, that's kind of a tree line back there, and I think we, we have two road frontages, and that, that has always been a little bit of a while back there, because there's trees and bushes.
You rather be able to re-rack it, but it's the first time I've ever heard it.
Is that...
Would that be part of the higher department cleanup?
Front yard is...
No, it's private.
It's only one front yard now.
Okay. You, you got the message.
Got it.
Any issues about an air conditioner, AC compressor?
I have no issues.
Motion to advertise?
Motion to advertise.
Jackie.
All in favor?
Hi.
We'll see you next month. Do you still have your sign? Do you still have your sign?
No.
Oh, gosh, no.
Jackie will tell you how, about your sign.
You need two signs.
No, well, oh, you're right, you have two sides.
You need two signs.
You need two...
You can have a word run down, not post.
Yep. You must be Ezra Rand.
I am.
Item number 12, Appeal 4073, Ezra Rand, Carousel Homes, 11 Old Townsend Road, Hopewell, requesting a 65-foot variance to build a dwelling less than 100 feet from Interstate 84 right-of-way pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. This is a 84 right-of-way day. All right, so tell us what's going on here. You've owned this property for a long time.
I have. I bought it in mid-'80s.
Okay.
I built one house, this lot was not built at that time. Leave.
Are you looking to build on it now? Is that the...
Build it or sell it, one of the two, yes.
Okay. So Townsend Road, you are near Jackson Farms?
I am surrounded by the Jackson Farm.
Okay, so you've got Jackson Farms?
Willie's my neighbor.
Okay.
And it's the end of Townsend Road where 84...
Is behind you, right?
I'm sorry?
Is, 84 is behind you?
Uh, 84 would be to the north.
This is the house before?
It's at the end.
Oh, next to you, okay.
It's just past Willie's house.
Got it, okay.
If you're familiar with that.
Yeah, we have partial access here, so...
You said just past Willie's house?
Just past Willie's house.
Okay, I know where it is.
And so this is I-84. So how close are you to I-84 already?
Right there.
Why would we want to build a residential house on this property?
Why?
Yeah. Well, I guess it's already a building lot.
It is a building lot. I built one house on Old Townsend Road, that was adjacent, this lot, on the other side of Willie's house.
I'm sorry, what?
They already had one variance for that parcel to build on.
To build on an undersized lot, so they already had that, so it's already recognized as a building lot. When did, and that variance, I need to get all this on the records.
We did it four, three times.
Okay. You okay with this?
Yeah, I'm okay.
In '82, '84, and '01.
And so code, the code changed in...
I know where it is.
2002, is when the comprehensive plan was adopted, and that's what put the 100-foot setback?
The 100-foot was adopted sometime between '01 and now.
After our, after the comprehensive plan was adopted in '02.
I'm sorry?
After the town adopted its comprehensive plan in 2002.
I, I don't know, we asked, but it doesn't matter when, when the 100-foot was created, but...
So how close is a house likely to be to the I-84?
The right-of-way is, if you take a look at the survey, the right-of-way is a good distance to the pavement.
Right.
Still, the right-of-way is right there. The right-of-way would be 65 feet away from the house, I believe. That's the right-of-way. And then the 84 is elevated. It's higher than this lot.
So the noise will come down into this lot? How loud is that? If you're, have you stood on this lot and...
Yeah, it's not bad. One of the things, when I originally bought it, was we created the berm with the intention of putting pine trees on the berm.
Okay.
Forty years later, we've never put the pine trees, but it's all over burned. So the berm that was created to separate the house from 84 creates quite a wood row.
But is any of that berm need to come down to put the house in, the driveway, for anybody to be able to get the septic in and the, in the...
Everything is all engineered. The septic is...
And so the, so the berm does not have to get, this berm that you're talking about doesn't need to be touched?
No, that's there for a reason. That's there to protect between the house and 84. But it's, it's not huge, but with the growth on top of it, it creates a nice separation.
I mean, he's not likely to have neighbors to object to this, I just worry about the person that's going to buy this house.
Why do you question that?
Because it's right on I-84, but buyer beware.
My initial beer is right on 84.
Yeah, I see that, I can see that. They're, they're further away, though.
And Willie is only 400 feet from...
They're further away.
I mean, yeah, we have had...
When the, when the Jackson Farm is developed, everybody's going to be on 84. On that meadow. When that, when and if, not in my lifetime, but when and if that meadow gets developed, there'll be a lot of houses on there.
All right.
Motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor? We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
So you have to put a sign on Old Townsend, but no, we're not going to tell you to put a sign on I-84 again.
Just one sign.
And last but not least, item number 13, Appeal 4074, Michael Renzetti, 356 Woodmont Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a special permit in, in order to bring in 4,833 additional cubic yards of fill... Pursuant to Section 194-75 of the zoning ordinance. Okay, so again, first time we're seeing this. Have you brought in any fill yet?
About 60, about 60 yards.
You brought in 60 yards? So you're within what's allowed by code?
So far.
Okay. What, so, we're all familiar with, we, we've seen Woodmont Road, you know, obviously, we've seen requests here.
Have you been to the site? Has anybody been to the site?
No.
I suggest a visit to the site.
Okay.
I've been to the site, and I won't say whether or not it's only 60 yards that have been imported, but you need to go look at the site.
Okay.
I wasn't there to witness how many trucks came in, but it's a lot, a lot of disturbance for 60 yards.
Okay. So 60 yards is two 30-yard dumpsters. We should be able to visualize two 30-yard dumpsters.
There was, there was material on my property already, that was there from when the original owner built the house in 1974. I spread it out, because I had mountains next to my house and in front of my house and on the side of the house, and I spread it all out. I didn't get a grading permit, then, no, I needed a grading permit. Mr. Bryant came up, so...
So what do you, what are you trying?
I have, I have a cliff behind my house.
Okay.
Forty-foot cliff, I would like the terrace set off.
All right, how much usable backyard do you have?
Probably 15, 20 feet off the back, off the, off the back of my house.
So the distance between you and I is your, is, and then the drop-off starts?
And then there's a 40-foot drop, that goes at about 40, 50 feet.
Which is...
And then drop that another 60, 70.
Which is typical of Woodmont, typical of Lichen Hall, sorry, typical of a couple of them, you know?
It's the nature of the beast at that location.
Yeah, exactly. People buy those lots because they kind of like the nature of that property, so, do you live here?
You can see pretty far, yes. We moved up.
Okay. So now you're looking, what is the area? I, I don't know how deep, I'm hearing 40 feet, but I don't know, 4,833 additional cubic yards, how much additional area is that going to get you?
Probably 300 feet, the length of my property, maybe 250 feet, and then another additional 15 feet, then it's going to slope down, give me another 10 feet, and then slope down again.
Okay.
That almost, it's almost a football field up there.
Yeah, and what's that going to do to your neighbors?
Absolutely zero, only one person, and I can see it.
Well, not what they see, I'm worried about drainage. Who's going, where's the, where's the runoff, where is it going to go?
Anyplace it goes now, I guess, it goes down the hill, there's two streams down there, a lot of streams now, so...
Yeah, the difference is, differences...
But has anybody looked at the engineering of this to be sure that it stays on his property?
Right, because originally, you had like forest, now you've got soil.
That would have absorbed it.
So it does behave differently, this, this runoff, yeah. But I think an engineer needs to look to make sure it's going to not give any downstream impacts, yeah.
Right.
I have another 900 feet, but the next neighbor that's down below me is about 900 to about 100 feet from my house, down the hill.
All right, hold on, I got to pull out your application here.
The other thing I'd just like to point out, how many loads do you figure?
How many did I bring in so far?
No.
How many loads do I figure that I might need now?
Yes, how many loads?
What, there's 16 yards through the road?
250 loads to 300 loads?
Talking about that here.
So, yeah, that makes the...
Somebody got to, got to a pretty exact calculation with 4,833, so...
But yeah, I think you just got to consider that road and, and that amount of truck traffic going up there as well.
So yeah, you have a very, very long line, okay?
There's a lot of houses up there with backyards that drop off.
Right, understood. We've, we've seen some of them. You have a construction entrance that's not even on your property, or do you own a lot next door?
Well, the, the next-door neighbor is Frank Pretzelseli. That entrance that's there was already there, I guess when they built the house, it was just rest and some bushes. There's one across the street from my house, that Ray Stackhouse must have used to build his house at one point, so I think we eat the road.
But you have, you have access to it, you have access to use it?
Yes.
Okay. And so, top of slope is, this is the area that you're looking to fill? Enough information on this one for me. This is probably what we need. Here's the terrace thing. So this is your house, you've got a deck, and then you've got... A grass area, but I don't have any measurements to see this. This is 81.6 feet.
I'm looking for 1016.
No, these are just contours.
Yeah.
It's getting to 10 feet, that's not what's there now, I don't think. I'm just looking to see, he told us he's got 15 feet, if, so if this is 81 feet, that's probably 25 to 30. So yeah, he's probably got the 15-foot grass area now, plus a deck, so he's got a little bit.
No backyard right now.
Yeah, it just drops off.
So like, how do you get, how do you get down to the rest of your property? How do you, you could just...
With a helicopter. Actually, it's a, it's a cliff.
And then what's down?
I can get down there, kids can get down there, I have, I can get down it, but getting back up, I think, you have two, three hours, but now, my neck is climb right back up. But it, it is a cliff.
I've seen those cliffs.
Yeah.
Of course, we're zip line. Beautiful, beautiful.
But the other, the other guy that lives below me, he wanted his friend to buy the house, so they could tie it to a cord from the chimney.
A zip line. Wow. All right, so what are we, what do we need to be concerned about here?
I just think it, you know, the board to go take a look in order to just see the...
Okay.
Scope of it, and then decide from there.
I mean, we have two applications on Woodmont Road, so it kind of makes sense for us to do that.
You know, at, at the very least, I think you want to have an environmental monitor. I, I think some downstream analysis should be provided by this engineer to make sure, regardless if it's 900 feet or 2,000 feet, whatever the distance is, that it's not impacting anybody. And we need to have a monitor there during this operation, it's a substantial amount of fill on a steep slope. Now, I don't know, is a steep slope permit going to be required, I think, as part, in addition to the excavation and filling permit? I think there's two permits, and I'm not quite sure, ridgeline permit's going to be required.
What does that mean?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering, which agencies issue these? It's just, is that just Building Department review, or does the Planning Board or, we don't have anything to do with that, so...
With the...
With the ridgeline permit and the steep slopes permit, does any of that need any other boards' review?
So... Is it planned? Is it you who are planning?
No, we don't issue it. I think that's only steep slope and excavation filling.
We got to look into that.
Okay.
See who issues it. I'm not...
Well, because the other Woodmont...
We can review it, but, but we don't issue it.
Right, does the, does it apply to the other Woodmont, is what I'm getting at?
Uh, no, I don't believe, 256, no.
Okay.
That's not a ridge, a ridge line.
Okay, got it.
What a ridge line is, if you can see from a distance...
Okay, yeah, Lou doesn't have it.
He doesn't, but you may, so, because in other words, if you have a view out, there's a view back. You have the view out, so I mean, there's a view back, but exactly from what?
These other houses are looking at me.
Right, so they're, right.